Good evening. I'd like to call to order the June 24th Committee of the Hall meeting. Clerk Richmond, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spadafor.
President.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Pelley Van Algu.
Present.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Kost.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Seven members present.
All right, thank you. Moving down the agenda, we have the minutes from the June 10th meeting. Vice President Hussein.
I'll move the meeting ministers presenter.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any comments, questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. All right, we are to the time for public comment on agenda items. There's nobody out in the virtual world that signed up for comment tonight. So if there's anybody that would like to speak to public comment this evening, please come up to the podium. You will have three minutes and state your name for the record.
Loretta Stanaway, and I don't see the mayor or his assistant here yet, but I would like to talk about the City Hall venture. First thing is that I believe that we need to get an independent outside assessment of the value of this property because in my view, a hole in the ground here with nothing on it would be worth more than the price they're offering for this facility. Second, I think that if they're going to build a hotel here, they certainly need more than one-third of the parking spaces as they have listed that they would have for the rooms they expect to have. I don't think I would be very comfortable reserving a space in a hotel room where I had to park off-site, and not only park off-site, but pay to park off-site. And lastly, I still think that we need to retain the ownership of this building, and if we're not going to use it as City Hall in any form, develop it ourselves. If they can develop it as a hotel, we own this. It's mortgage-free. Let us develop it as a hotel with penthouse suites on the top to generate an income stream and pay our expenses. We are sick and tired as a public of giving away our assets, running them to the ground, and then saying they have no value. It's got to stop. This is a good place to draw that line in the sand and say enough is enough. We're not giving away any more of our public assets. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak during public comment? All right, seeing no additional public comment, we'll move on down to presentations. We have our first presentation, highlights of Ingham County Specialty Courts, Judge Lisa McCormick and Judge Cynthia Ward.
Good evening. My name is Judge Lisa McCormick, and I am the presiding judge for the 30th Circuit Court here in Ingham County. I am joined by my colleagues Judge Jamo in the Ingham County Circuit Court, Judge Ward from 54A District Court, and Chief Judge Buchanan from 54A District Court.
If you'd like to come into the well, you're more welcome to sit down here, unless you feel more comfortable up there.
The only thing I'll say is I have been sitting all day, so I am happy to stand, if that's okay with everyone.
That's quite fine.
All right. And I just touched the mic, so I apologize because there's a big note here that says "Don't do that." But anyway, so I formed the Ingham County Specialty Court Coalition for a couple reasons. And one, the first, is to inform the public of the great work that the 54A, 54B, 55th, and the 30th Circuit Court is doing, and how we're handling our specialty courts. This resource book is for the community to know what the court is doing. So as elected officials, the judges are elected officials, you're all elected officials, it is important that we inform the public as to the good work that we're doing and following best practices for individuals that enter the criminal justice system, have contact with the court through the business court, and for neglect and abuse cases, for just an example, the trafficking court that Judge Dunning's does. We're doing amazing things at the courts as a whole, and I wanted to inform the public and our community of the great work that we're doing. The other reason was for the judges to sit down and collaborate about our specialty courts and improve them. We run into issues at the court, in our individual courts, and we can troubleshoot and deal with problems and try to focus on solutions for participants, and we are stronger as a whole. So it's an opportunity for us as judges to discuss concerns and problems and ways to provide resources to individuals that are struggling in our community. We know they're living in our community, but if you're struggling with substance use or housing, these are things that we can talk to collectively as a group. And then third, was to bring information, like forming a specialty court coalition, to the group. There are national trainings that are incredible. I went to one of those trainings in Houston last year, and that's how I learned about forming a specialty court coalition. So I brought that back to the judges. Not everyone can go, those trainings are expensive. I was fortunate to be able to go to that training where I learned valuable information, best practices, and I brought those back to my court, and all that information I wanted to share with my colleagues. So that is the reason why I formed the Specialty Court Coalition unanimously. All the judges were in support of forming this coalition. We're going to meet quarterly to discuss issues, how we can streamline our cases, we were just talking about it today, to get people into specialty court as quick as possible. So there's amazing things that we can still do in regards to the running of these courts. I brought you all, councilmembers, a hard copy of the Specialty Court Coalition, and I can bring that up to you, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions from council at this time? No questions from council? Okay, is any of the other honorable judges would like to get up and speak and talk about this?
I think they left me to it.
All right.
But just for a procedural matter, we're not going to stay for your seven o'clock meeting, if that's okay?
That's quite fine.
We just, I just wanted to make sure that was okay. I don't want you to think we were leaving without permission. So without hearing any questions?
No, we do have actually one. Councilwoman Pelley Van Algu.
Thank you, President Garza. I would just like to thank you for bringing this information and making your presentation to us. It's incredibly important, all of the items you've touched on such as collaboration, your continued education, and streamlining your cases, which is important not only to the folks who come before you, but victims as well, and so it's very appreciated that you are working together as a unit on these specialty courts, and I appreciate your time and for coming to speak with us today. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the support from everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on down the agenda. We have presentation, highlights of the Advanced Peace, Dr. Chandra Marshall, Director of Center of Racial and Social Justice, MPHI, and Charles Richardson, Strategy Manager, Advanced Peace. Please come down to the well. Well, thank you for being here and willing to present to us this evening. Make sure there's a green light on the base of that microphone. Make sure that's bright green. Awesome, okay. And the floor is yours, and we'll open it up to questions once you guys are done.
All right, thank you so much. I'm Dr. Chandra Marshall, as mentioned, and first I want to say, and we want to say thank you for the investment in AP, Advanced Peace, for three years. I really do think that you'll appreciate the updates shared today. Also, thank you for making a decision to fund this work for a fourth year, and finally, thank you for investing in an office of violence prevention. The City of Lansing is in the forefront, and we are doing the work the right way. MPHI agreed to be the local operator and have staffed up the center as well as Advanced Peace. Dr. Paul Elam hired me, and I was able to hire Charles Richardson, who's here with me today, which is a great accomplishment of the Center for Racial and Social Justice. We have, to date, staffed Advanced Peace by hiring a strategy manager, five peacekeepers, three NCA's, one administrative support, and one field coordinator. The city funded the southwest side of Lansing for 18 months of the fellowship, and last fall, we announced the expansion. So we have multiple funders funding this initiative, which include the City of Lansing, Ingham County, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, the United States Department of Justice, and more recently, East Lansing. That happened very recently. Our partners are Ingham County Health Department, MPHI, and also Advanced Peace National. So Advanced Peace sits in the Center for Racial and Social Justice at MPHI, which really works to understand how individual families and community health is influenced by exposure to the child welfare, juvenile justice, and criminal justice systems. Gun violence is a major public health issue, and public health works to address systemic and root causes of diseases or injury before they occur, and also focuses on improving the health of an entire population through large-scale interventions, and is a model, it stands as an evidence-based approach in interrupting cyclical and gun violence. So now I'll turn it over to Charles to take it from here.
Thank you. Again, my name's Charles Richardson. I'm the Strategy Manager for Advanced Peace. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to share with you here today. We shared whereabouts for documents with you. I won't, I'll highlight them, I won't read through them, but it's just important to discuss some of the things that we've actually been doing and things we've been doing with our funding as well. As Dr. Marshall mentioned, I'm sorry, let me highlight the reports. It's the 18-month data evaluation report, the 18-month overview of shootings report, the budget report, and also the Advanced Peace evidence-based practices, the report that focuses on the transformative travel. And just to give some context to our conversation, just as a reminder of the type of work that we're doing, the work that we do is we engage those who we believe are at the center of retaliatory and cyclical gun violence. For the lay individual, we're engaging those that we believe are carrying weapons and are prepared to use them. So that just kind of gives some context to our discussion and the information in the report, and I'm fortunate that we can, we can laud some of the success that we've had, even recognizing that things that are currently going on in the community still give us a great deal of concern, but we are showing some progress in building that ecosystem that you hear Dr. Elam talk about in terms of the role that we play and the contributions that we're trying to make. I'd just like to highlight some of the changes and some of the things that have been happening over the course of time since October 2022. As Dr. Marshall indicated, we have been building capacity, we have added more staff, and we will continue to be doing so. And keep in mind that when we're looking at this report, we're talking about primarily four individuals who was, who are engaging an entire community and focused in an area. Fortunately, since that time, we've been able to, we talked about the expansion back in November, we've expanded into southeast, and we're also looking to expand in the northwest. Another thing that we have done is we've touched those places that are just outside our city lines, and as Dr. Marshall indicated, we were fortunate last week to secure funding from the City of East Lansing. I think one of the important things to highlight is the establishment of the partnerships through this work. I want to be thankful, I'm thankful to the mayor, to the U.S. Council members, and to the county for the support that they've had for Advanced Peace, and also thank law enforcement for allowing us in that space. I think that what it's showing is that the work together is very valuable in terms of what we're doing and the success that we're having. If you notice in some of the reports, some of the things that were really important is our level of engagement with the number of individuals we actually have working for us. We had over 1,100 hours of occasions where, and 850 of those hours were trying to build trust within our community, trying to establish those relationships so that it could work toward us being able to become credible messengers in the community, as well as to be able to engage folks and get them to work with us and look at us as those individuals that provide a safe space for them to be at. Also, you'll notice that we mediated 146 community conflicts during that time that could have resulted in shootings. And so as you're looking at some of the results that came from that, we believe based on our evidence that we prevented 41 potential shootings over that time. And if those potential shootings, shootings don't happen, let me clarify, don't happen, if they don't happen, we believe that the estimates show that we've saved the city anywhere from 28 million on the side of those non-fatal shootings if they don't happen, and up to 49 millions if those were fatalities. And that takes into consideration all the direct and the indirect costs that would be related to that. I think one of the most important things that we would want to highlight is that our fellows are still alive, and that 93% of them have indicated that they're no longer engaging in conflicts that would result in using a weapon. And so those are important, those are successes that we have to, that we have to laud as progress, but we still have a long way to go. Some of the other things that we've added is we also, we're working in the Lansing School District. We had three peacekeepers working in the school district, and they were at the three high schools. We've also began to have some discussions about possibly having some additional engagement in other schools and seeking some funding to do that as well. We've been working with our computer community partners, The Village, Child and Family Charities, Eastside Community Action Network. Those partners have been coming together on a monthly basis to have discussions about strategizing in terms of what we're doing and the things that we can be doing to support each other in terms of the resources that might be needed for the fellows that we work with. In addition, you know, I mentioned the expansions, and those go without saying. We obviously know that things are happening outside of our community, so we want to be able to touch those places as well because it can certainly have an impact here. That's just the highlights of what we're doing. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you very much for highlighting what you guys are doing. I think it's great and very important work. And yeah, I'll open it up to questions from council. Anybody on council have any questions at this time? Councilman Jackson.
It's not so much a question, it's just a thank you for the work you're doing. And I'm just kind of reading through some of the notes from your on-the-ground agents, and I think they're amazing. They're really detailed, and it looks like each one of them is doing the work that pretty much this program is supposed to do, and I appreciate you guys coming up here. Some of these notes are even more detailed than my colleagues take on their case files, so it's just great to see that, and if that's how it's logged, because I can understand more from reading these than anything else, pretty much. So thank you for your work, and to all the people out there that's doing the work, you guys keep it up. I mean, on paper, we can say, you know, you saved, did so many, but I mean, the opposite of not doing that, we would hear about it, and people's lives and families would be broken, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. If I could, and I wanted to say that to last, I think what's the most important, in part in terms of this work, is that the individuals that are behind me, really, we need to thank them for the work that they're doing. You know, I have the opportunity to get here and talk to you all, but they're actually doing the work, and they really should be commended, and for the number of people that they had when they started, and the direction that they're headed, they really should be commended, and I commend them and thank them for all their work as well.
Great, thank you. So I, okay, I have a couple questions, and sorry, we received this back today, so I didn't get to read through the whole thing, but when you talk about support, you know, the healthy development of youth, are there any programs for like their parents? Because I mean, from what I hear, different times in the streets is that, you know, it starts at home, right? The parent's not there, whether they're working, or, you know, they're locked up, or whatever has, you know, then the kid's, you know, following the direction of somebody else. So are there programs for the adults, for the parents of those children?
There are programs, but not specifically through Advanced Peace. I think that's one of the unique things that we have to try to, I have to try to share when I'm doing the presentations and conversations, that we are very linear in terms of the work that we do. In terms of our partners and support, we might, that might be part of something that is established through their life map or their goals, that that be a component, but what we do is we take them as they are. So it may be a number of different things, President Garcia, that might impact that, but those services are available, but not necessarily directly through us, but maybe indirectly.
Okay, well, well, thank you for that. Now, and I do recognize a few of those members, and they're definitely stewards of the community and very relatable to the, to the youth that's, you know, dealing with this problem, so I appreciate it, I commend them for their work that they're doing as well. Now, can you just expand a little bit, maybe give me like a timeline? Because, you know, I know that first 18 months was the southwest side of Lansing, and now you're moving into the southeast, and did you say northwest or north?
Yes, and to the northwest.
So have those already started, or if not, what's the timeline?
Actually, our new court will begin in July, so in terms of our next 18-month fellowship. Since that time, we have been still actively engaging folks in the community as well as doing the things that we were always doing, but also there's a recruiting process, so then we're in the process of trying to recruit people that would want to participate in the fellowship.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to look through this and digest it, and I'll probably end up having some more questions for you. Vice President Hussein.
Yes, I was curious, a couple things. Number one, big support of the program. Do understand it's evidence-based, certainly. I appreciate the way, I've talked to a lot of people in terms of the implementation aspect, and we appreciate everything you guys are doing. You, you referenced EL as a funder, East Lansing as a funder. So I guess I'm curious, does that mean that this is now going to push into East Lansing, and we're going to actually be identifying East Lansing youth that are most likely to carry and most likely to offend, or are they actually funding the effort in Lansing because they believe that that spills out? I mean, what does that look like?
They're funding the effort in East Lansing.
Okay.
You know, based on our evidence, and that's a great question, VP. The thing is, we've identified folks that who are, we believe that are carrying weapons in East Lansing, so to that extent, is that's a contiguous area to City of Lansing, so it's important that we try to engage there. So fortunately, we've been able to secure funding to have a neighborhood change agent and a peacekeeper there.
Fantastic, okay. And I know, you know, part of the success of the program is the fact that you guys get to be a little coy with certain things and protect, you know, certain things from certain entities and groups, and if that sounds cryptic, and that's okay. But I do have a question. If the purpose is to ensure that we are identifying the most at-risk, right, of actually getting out there and defending with guns, how are we qualifying and identifying those? I mean, how, how are we ensuring that those are the folks that we're actually working with?
Well, I think one of that goes into a lot of research, a lot of digging, getting, if you will, intel about what has been going on, and sometimes it's just being able to identify, somebody may share some information with us. There are any number of ways. I think the key guys are credibility and confidentiality.
Right.
Those two components make it so a person has a space to be able to have a conversation. And so to whatever degree the work that these individuals do, which is, it's a skill, it's a special skill that you have to have, and not everybody has that. So in terms of building those trusts and building those relationships, those go a long way in terms of identifying individuals.
May I speak too?
Sure.
And that goes back to the community violence intervention piece. Without the team behind us, we couldn't do this. And so that's, that's the credibility, and that's the approach.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. So a question, reading some of the material, it sounds like there's been times, or there could be times, where a change agent or some agent might take a weapon from somebody so that they don't use it or make anybody else endangered. I'm just curious and kind of concerned that if the change agent was going home, or what they would do if they got stopped and all that, I hope that that would never happen, but if it did, it could create problems, and hopefully, I'm sure you guys probably talked to the police about it, hopefully.
We have multiple discussions in our trainings about those different types of things and those potentials. I think there's some degree, if we have to accept that there's some degree of risk that goes along with this as well. So I don't think we can take for granted exactly what these neighborhood change agents are doing in terms of working. They're not engaging themselves in any type of illegal activity, and from our perspective, if they were to take a weapon off someone, that most likely is probably going to save someone's life, so it might be a risk worth taking.
Okay. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council at this time? Would any of the gentlemen in the back like to come up and say any words? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but if you have anything to say, you're more welcome to. No, I'm just saying if there's anything you'd like to add onto this presentation, you guys are more welcome to. Okay. Mayor Shore, do you have anything?
Just thank you for all the work that you're doing. We know that this is a very difficult time, but we also know that it doesn't get publicity when you stop something, and we appreciate all that you have done to help us out. I'm looking forward to the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, all right, we'll see you. No further questions. I appreciate you guys being here. Thanks for providing much-needed information.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on down our agenda. We have Presentation D, Highlights for Sale of City Hall Property, John Paul Beitler, Beitler Real Estate. I know City TV has the presentation, if you could please put that up on the TV for the folks out that aren't here, thank you. And if you could check to make sure your green light is on, it's, sometimes it looks like it's on. If it's not bright green, it's, all right, great. Just pull the mic up to you, the floor will be yours, and then we'll let you present, and then we'll open up for questions.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Paul Beitler. I'm president of Beitler.
I don't, I don't think your mic's on.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Paul Beitler. I'm president of Beitler Real Estate Services, and with me this evening is my partner, JP Beitler, who is our chief executive officer. He'll be presenting our plans for the redevelopment and the repositioning of this wonderful old building. But before he does so, I'd like to take a moment and tell you a little story. I remember the first time when I saw this building. It was back in mid-1960. I was a new student here at Michigan State University, and in order to supplement my income, I took a job at the largest and the only hotel in downtown Lansing, which was the 400-room Jack Tarr Lansing Hotel, just across the street from this building. And while I was there, working in the kitchen, I met another student, and we became very good friends, and on our break, he would grab some cookies, and I would grab a cold bottle of Faygo Rockin' Ride, and we'd steal away from the hotel and come over here and plop down in the plaza, and he would talk about all the things that we should do to improve the Jack Tarr Hotel, and I would talk about how we could add more than 400 rooms to it. As time went on, his career led him to eventually become the worldwide president for Hyatt Hotels, who today is on their board of directors and is a very good friend. For myself, I continued in the area of real estate and was able to create one of the largest and most successful real estate development and property management companies, not only in downtown Chicago, but the Midwest. When I sat in the plaza, and I looked at this building, which was fresh and new to the City of Lansing, it was beautiful, something Lansing had never seen before. Kenneth Black had created an architectural wonder and statement. I looked at the one wall with the Indiana limestone and the punched windows, I looked at the other wall that was all glass, and they were like two arms that were reaching out to the community to say, "Come inside." And so I did. I went through the doors, and I was caught with the vaulted ceilings, the beautiful round columns and marble, and what isn't there today were three of the most fantastic fountains, each with a different type of flow that had a pattern, but all of which presented a beautiful calming sound. And then I'd walk around the building, and I saw on the one side of the building the city symbol that was carved by Leonard Youngworth, and I thought to myself, "Oh my gosh, this is, this is just something that we've never seen before." And when it was compared to all the neighboring buildings that were red brick, or the windows were stacked like soldiers, one on top of another, even the old building, which had a beautiful top that penetrated the sky, but the base of the building was unfortunately very understated. I thought to myself, somewhere in my life, regardless of what my education is, I want buildings to be a part of it. So now let's fast forward to 2017. I'm sitting in my office in Chicago, I'm opening my mail, and there is an invitation from the City of Lansing to come to the city and participate in a request for proposal process to buy and to reposition this building because it was worn out. All the functions that it provided as an office building were now passing. It didn't really work well, and so the city had reached the point where they were at a break, a breaking point, where they had to do something with this building because the cost to keep it and operating it were not working. We looked at this building, and we were very excited because we had an idea of what it could be to reposition it back into the community and make it something that would be financially viable for the city, including taxes. But more importantly, it would be a revenue generator, not only in terms of revenue for the city, but also employment, and for people who would be providing ancillary services to a hotel, which is enormously important, and something you wouldn't have in an office It was an exciting time. And so I asked JP, "Please read this letter. Is it really true? Are they really thinking about doing this?" And he said, "Dad," he said, "your dream is gone." And he said, Dad, he said, your dream has come true. So we called all the architects in our office and the engineers and all the people that we would use to make it a new product, a new hotel. And we were scurrying so fast, I think if I were an outsider looking in, we'd look like the Griswolds running toward Wally World. And we finally got our proposal together and we came here to Lansing and made our presentation. In fact, we were actually in this room several times presenting to one of the individuals who now was a council member. Our final meeting took place in the convention center where there was a public hearing. And I think there were maybe four or five respondents. They put on a show for about a half an hour, of which we were one. At the end of that process, several days later, we were informed we had won. We were the only respondent that didn't advocate knocking down this building. So why am I here tonight? Well, I'll tell you what our motivation is. It's not money, not by far. This building has an architectural heritage that is the cornerstone of the city's buildings downtown. And I don't want to see a wrecking ball knock it down, not even one stone out of this building. And so that is why we've worked very hard to come up with a program to reposition this building and to re-energize it so that going forward for the next decades, it will be an income producer for the city. Secondly, and I mean this genuinely, I owe a debt of gratitude to Lansing and this city because it launched me on a career that I never thought I'd be able to achieve. And so with the experience and the success and the knowledge that I have gained along with my company, I wanted to help the city do something that the city may not be able to do for itself by repositioning this asset. And so with that, I would like to hand our presentation over to JP.
Thank you. I I might actually have you mayor hand out those books just because it's hard for me to see the screen, if that's okay. So I'll flip the slides on the TV as well, but this might give you a better visual in front of you. Office building design has changed a lot since the turn of the century. Turn of the century, really up until this building was built, the designs of office buildings were what my dad calls alphabet buildings. This is an L. There's O's where you have an atrium. There's T's, there's U's, there's X's. And the reason for that design primarily was because of air conditioning. A lot of the buildings back in the nineteen hundreds in Chicago, we have a lot of them, didn't have air conditioning. And so they formed the shape of these buildings to create airflow and natural light to get access to the tenants within the buildings. But around the time of this building, shortly thereafter, tenants were using space differently. They wanted to put more people in less space, more people on the floor, not have to elevator as much between the different floors. And so in the nineteen sixties, seventies and eighties, office buildings changed their design and began to became more rectangular, more square, thirty thousand feet, forty thousand feet, Sears Tower, fifty thousand square foot floor plates. And you'd have a sea of workstations and offices and you'd maximize the density on those floors. And that was very efficient when it came to designing a building, offices. And these older buildings became less desirable. They weren't up to par and they weren't what office buildings of the future were to be. That's changed and and COVID changed that. What happened with COVID was the demand for office space has gone down and it's a cultural shift. It's a change from not necessarily businesses going out of business, but people taking advantage of technology and be able to work from home or maybe only come in three days a week. And so owners of office buildings, of modern office buildings, developers of modern office buildings, they're losing tenants, they're losing occupancy. And so as they look to the future, as we look to the future, you now have to look at, can I convert this building into something else? And that's that's a hard question to answer because it's different for each building. But in the newer building, that's harder to do and I'll show you why. But when we looked at this building, it's an alphabet building. And while it may not be efficient for a modern office building, it's set up perfectly to receive a different use. And so while another building might require a demolition in order to start over, this does not. And so we took a look at what we thought we could do to this building to carry it forward into the future. There's really five, maybe six essentials you have to go through to take a look at that. I like to call them ingredients. For example, you have to identify a higher and better use for the building where office won't be it into the future. Second, that higher and better use has to be able to be supported by the location of the building, not just the physical location, but all the things, the economic drivers around it. The third part is parking, and this is frankly where a lot of these run into problems. Rarely do office buildings have an abundance of parking that rely on public transportation for tenants to come and go. But if you want to convert to a hotel or an apartment, those users acquire a lot of parking. Fourth is zoning. Well, zoning doesn't always prohibit you from doing a use in the building. Many times the building isn't zoned. And so that puts an additional process of time at risk into converting a project. And then fifth, perhaps most interestingly is the actual physical feasibility of it. Can the building receive the new use? Can it take on the hotel rooms? Can it take on the apartment rooms? And lastly is timing. How long will it take and will, in this case, will it line up with what the city is looking to do in its next building for city hall? Starting with the higher and better use, we took a look at a thirty thousand foot picture of metropolitan Lansing, which had a population of over four hundred thousand people, which we felt had all the necessary ingredients to support a new use and hospitality. You have medical, you have government, both city with the convention center, state obviously across the street, and universities. So with a diverse population and diverse source of uses, you have the drivers that a hotel needs to live on frankly year round. So that checked the box. The next was location. Here, we're talking about, not only is the area ready to receive the hotel, but where's the hotel relative to those drivers? Obviously, I don't need to point this out, but you're right across the street from the state Capitol Building, which is an ideal location for anybody in government needing to use a hotel facility to support the work they're doing, at least for the state level. From the city's perspective, it has a wonderful convention center. And all convention centers everywhere we go are always screaming for more hotels. They hate turning business away, especially when they're trying to compete with other places such as Grand Rapids and other evolving, expanding cities. So we were very happy to see that a hotel can not only come into Lansing and and be successful, but you're within a five minute walking distance to a convention center. And so that would support not only the capital business, but also all the local things you want to do as the city of Lansing. We then started to see what the city was doing for the future. And the hotel was fitting in nicely with the expansion you're doing downtown, with workforce housing, apartments, office and things of that nature. And so in this image, we almost fill the center of the donut hole for all the other uses that are coming into town and being proposed. And we would, the hotel would not only feed off the drivers that exist today, but these would further support the hotel in into the future. So checking those off the list, we took a look at parking. We're really lucky. When this building was designed, it had underground parking. Now that we're proposing approximately a hundred and eighty-three room hotel, I know there are not a hundred and eighty-three parking spaces in the building, but there are sixty. What's nice about the onsite parking is it takes that cost to build it off of our shoulders and makes the project financially feasible. Underground parking can go as high as forty thousand dollars a stall to build per space. This is excellent for a hotel use. Not only is it a place where guests can park or a valet can park cars, but also people working in the actual hotel can park onsite as well. So this was another thing that most office buildings don't have and the conversation ends. We did ask for additional parking offsite, which I'll come to at the end, but as far as what's already here, this is a very good start. Zoning. Again, we always look at these buildings, many are are built as office buildings and areas zoned strictly for office. Here we have flexibility for lodging. So this does save time and aggravation and a lot of paperwork and we're pleased that you see that that you have that ingredient. Now comes into feasibility. Can we fit a hotel in this building or not? And it's important to 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 expand on that. It's not just the rooms, but a hotel is really an operating business. You have retail, you have restaurants, you have meeting space, many times a pool. Uh, and then you have to figure out how to handle guests coming on and off property. And so while this is an image of what we view a restaurant at the top of the building to be, we had to go through more or less floor by floor to see if it accommodate all the different aspects of a hotel, which it does. Starting with the ground floor, I'll just take you through it briefly. We really liked the fact that you have a plaza. We felt this would be a great opportunity for vehicles to pull in, drop off or otherwise pick up or valet and pull out. So all the vehicular traffic coming to the property would be handled on property and ideally take it off of the street. And so we activated that space with the parking. Going through the building, there's sufficient space for a lobby, for meeting space. Convention centers will always tell you that when conventioneers come, they typically break out before or afterwards and have smaller meetings. And this hu- hotel has several different opportunities for meeting space. There's room for fitness center, there's even room for a pool. And then in the the pink kind of red colors, we we held that out for retail. That could be retail that's run by the hotel or frankly, local third party retailers as actual tenants, activating that ground floor hard corner and activating the interior of the courtyard. The restaurant portion we're contemplating is on the seventh floor. What we liked about the ground floor is you could access it separately from the rest of the hotel. So as you look through the pictures perhaps later, there's three elevators that would service the actual guest floors. But there's two other elevators that could service exclusively the restaurant. And so you could have patrons that were not necessarily spending the night at the hotel come and enjoy the restaurant as well. So we're blown away with how all of these elements were able to actually fit within the the first floor of the property. Then come the rooms and here's your L. The wonderful thing about the L is it lays out very efficiently for this type of a use. And what I mean by that is really the hallway. The hallway in this case is what we call double loaded corridor. And all that's fancy talk for you can put rooms on either side of the hallway and you don't lose a lot of space. It's very efficient. So for example, on one side of the hallway, you have king sized rooms. And on the other side of the hallway, you have two beds, queen sized rooms. And as you go throughout the building, you're able to really take advantage of the real estate of the floor for guests. Whereas if you had a square, it'd be very deep rooms, maybe not a lot, almost a bowling alley type configuration. So we're very happy with how this building laid out for hospitality. This slide takes you to the seventh floor where we'd like to capture on the low portion of the building, the roof and make it a restaurant. Right there, you have two elevators that would serve access and access into it. The restaurant could be run by the hotel or it could be a third party. It would then have doors that would go into the hotel, so a gasket key card into that restaurant if they so chose. But this this was a wonderful way to recapture some dead space on the building and activate it where it currently is not. And then finally, this is the, as the floors drop off, now the L becomes more of an I. And again, you have your hotel rooms of the double loaded corridor, which is quite efficient. If you take a slice through the building, this really sums up everything within the building. From bottom to top, you have your parking. On the ground floor, you have meeting space, you have room for lobby. You have room for access to elevators for the restaurant. And then going above that, you have all your hotel rooms. So frankly, if you were to design a hotel for this site, this is almost ideal. Timing. We've been waiting a long time to try and come before you for this project. And we're very excited when you finally had a solution for not just the city hall, but all the different uses within this, within this building. And so working loosely with with the timeframe, I'm showing here for the new city hall component, about a six month period from this month, June, to design that building. Obviously, that may go up or down, but let's just call it six months, followed by about a fourteen month period to construct your new city hall building. Now during that time, we would be waiting for you to do all these things, but we would be doing things ourselves. We'd be doing our own design. We'd be doing our own engineering, our own pricing. And another thing, identifying a hotel flag. For what it's worth, many people don't realize this, but hotels are actually franchises. Rarely do hotel brands Hilton, Marriott and so forth own a hotel. They license it. And so this is a wonderful opportunity for us to present this while we started the conversations in more earnest about the opportunity to pick the right brand and the right flag and ultimately negotiate the most favorable franchise agreement. And that takes time. So while you all have time to move out, we'll be utilizing that time to get this project ultimately going. Once you all are ready to move out, the idea is that we would then come in behind you and start construction. And I've given you a timeline for what we think that would be approximately with some room for give. Now, how do you memorialize all this into a into a contract? What what does it look like? And my dad always says to me, if you can't explain something to me like I'm five, it's too, the deal's too complicated. So we spent a long time working with staff to boil it down to make it as simple as possible. And I've summarized that for 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 you tonight. The project is a hundred and eighty-three room hotel. The purchase price is two point seven eight million as is. Where did that num- number come from and what does as is mean? The number came from the most recent third party appraisal issued by the city. So we took the appraisal that was done for the city and we accepted that number. What does as is mean? It means we take it as is. So any asbestos or any other hazardous material or any cost to demolish, that's on us. So that's that's what that element looks like. Closing. When would we close? Since we don't know the exact date you would be moving out, all of your different things moving out, lockups, courthouses, new city hall, the idea was ultimately sixty days after the last element is out. And we triggered that by a certificate of occupancy. So to keep it simple, if new city hall gets a certificate of occupancy, we assumed it would be about two months for you to actually move out. And that's when we'd be required to close. Given the timeframe leading up to that, we'd be working and knowing about when that would happen all along the way. So there's plenty of time to coordinate that. Tax incentives. We are not asking for any tax incentives. So that means in this case, when we close on the property and it becomes a private property, the city would retain a hundred percent of all the taxes generated by the building. Parking. Yes, there are only sixty spaces approximately in the building. Yes, there are only 60 spaces approximately in the building. What we had asked for in our agreement was an additional 100 spaces off-site to be made available. So if a guest were to come to the hotel and onsite parking was full, valet would have a place to put the vehicles. We would not be getting those spaces for free. The spaces that would be used, we paid for at market rates to the city, as though we did when we came today and parked. And then the preservation component. A lot of this was driven frankly by people we've talked to in the community, and Paul. He's done a lot of rehabilitations of buildings, and it's important that you take advantage of things that you don't see go up anymore. So on the west-side wall in its entirety would remain, including really what is more or less public art with the sculpture on the side. And we think that would be exciting to keep within the building. Obviously, things like the glass and everything else would be replaced, but that component is in the agreement to be maintained and preserved throughout. So that is the long story of how we came about on this project, why we think this is an excellent opportunity to convert from what it is today into something into the future. And we did do a 3D animation video, which is on YouTube, but if you haven't seen it, I tried to see if you guys could run it on the screens. It's my closer here. And so this video gives you guys an idea of ultimately what the building would look So with that, I thank you all for your time this evening and hearing our long explanation, but we're very excited about this project. We're very hopeful for the future of your new City Hall and ultimately taking over your old City Hall. And to the degree you have any questions for us now, we'd be happy to take them.
Well, thank you for being here. It's very much appreciated. I know this has been a longstanding process, and I think the city for the most part is excited about this. There's definitely some questions that need to be answered, and so I will open it up to the council to see if there's any questions that they need to ask at this time. Councilman Jackson.
When was the most recent appraisal done?
I think it was within the past 12 months, but I'm sure staff could provide that to you. I don't have it on hand.
It should be in your packet.
I believe I talked to you, I didn't say in the packet, but I thought you may have said March of last year.
Yeah, I think that's about right. We can get it if it's not in the packet, I thought it was, but if it's not, we can get it.
Okay. And well, I guess I want to expand on it real quick. You said the city is who did the appraisal or who contracted out. Who was the appraiser? The third-party appraiser, do you know?
I don't, but again, we had the sheet, I should, I'll see if I can find it.
All right, thank you. Do you have any additional questions at this time? Councilman Jackson?
No, I just, I mean, besides that, I was just curious, because that is probably a somewhat key question when it comes to, because you guys have been on this since 2017, so, you know, just wanted to know. And I look at everybody, because I'm sorry if I missed it in this very large packet, but I did enjoy the presentation.
Thank you. Yes, I didn't present that document in here, but I have a copy, and I'm sure staff does as well.
Okay. Vice President Hussein.
Yes, I think it's important though, and obviously, we had a standaway up here earlier asking about the appraisal, purchase price. I think that's, I mean, it's critical, obviously, tonight, what we're looking at doing is setting up public hearing for the eighth. But it's critical, I think, that we have answers to those questions prior to, at the very earliest July 22nd, when we might consider this. But there's a few, I think, additional questions regarding that. So first, I think we're going to want to know why, so in 2017 contemplated, the purchase price was 4.2 million. That was based on a professional appraisal that was done in 2015. So number one, I would want to know who the appraiser was at that time. We can find that out, obviously. Two, who the appraiser was this time. You know, same methods, same, you know, everything used, and why the, you know, some almost $1.4 million reduction, actually more than $1.4 million dollars of reduction. So I think with regards to the appraisal piece, those are the answers we need.
I got the answer. Shelby's on vacation, but she's texting me. It was done in March of '23 by Valbridge.
Valbridge. And do we know if this is the same company that?
I don't know who did it in '17. We'd have to go back and look.
It was actually done in 2015.
Was it like? 2015, 2015, thank you. I'll look it up. I don't have it on hand.
Are you saying this, the last appraisal by Valbridge was 2015, or the prior one?
No, 2023 by Valbridge. I'll have to look up who did it in 2015. I will point out that in the 10 years between appraisals, this building has significantly deteriorated, so it is not a huge surprise that the appraisal is a lot less. But certainly, we can get you the different appraisals, and we can get you all, and the appraisal is how they did the process, so we'll get you both the appraisals. I know we've got it from when you guys first put in your bids in 2017. We've got a stick somewhere, so I'll get it tomorrow. Thank you.
And then I think too, based on that, so the charter essentially requires whenever we're looking at disposing of real property, that there is an appraisal, and that the sale price is at at least that appraised value. And so I'm also curious, was there any effort to negotiate a higher purchase point or not?
No, because they're going to be cleaning out all the asbestos, they're going to be spending a lot of money on this building, so for me, it was, what's the appraisal? What's it worth right now? Had they insisted that we pay for asbestos removal and all the other things, then it would have been a conversation, but because of the "as-is" clause, we said, you take it as-is, what it's worth, and you make it usable, and they'll be spending plenty of money doing it, so no, there was not, that was not part of the conversation.
Yeah. And then for Beitler and his son, a couple of questions. One, I guess I'm curious, what market studies did you guys use to determine that the market can actually bear, I think it's another 183 doors? The only reason why I ask is obviously, we have the 256 rooms, radisson 1985 to 2020, but then we brought the courtyard on in 2020. Obviously, we brought two additional hotels as part of the Red Cedar development in 2023. So I'm just curious as to, you know, what studies you're using to determine that this market can actually bear those keys? Number one, are those current studies?
I would say the studies are not current. Frankly, the city's been ambivalent for seven years on what they want to do, and it's a big cost to issue a deep underwriting feasibility study on a project. Initially, back in 2017, we did some light underwriting and indicated there was a strong demand for a hotel at the time. In fact, we came in originally proposing the Doubletree, which went somewhere else. But we liked what we saw and continue to see the growth. In fact, with the additional hotels that have gone up since then, it's not unlike a car dealership where you see another pop up and do another and do another, and they all feed each other. A lot of times with convention centers, they all work together from a hotel perspective to do that. But as we were to move forward with this project, frankly, financing would require a current feasibility report verifying that. There's really two main people we turned to do that. I would want to do that a little closer to construction, to make sure things are current. But right now, there's nothing that we're seeing that suggests the hospitality is going the other direction. It's really office that's going the other direction. As far as apartments are concerned for this site, we did take a look at that back in the day and even revisit that again. One of the main problems we have, at least with preserving the building from apartments' perspective, is not only parking, but views. Hotel guests typically are nightly, one, maybe two nights, and so they can tolerate a room that may not have a view on every particular location on the floor, but apartments, they're signing 12, 13, 14-month leases, and so when half of these views are into a wall and the other half are not, that becomes a feasibility challenge. But to answer your question, we would be doing a new feasibility study, in particular in conjunction with when we select our brand.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Carter.
Thank you, President Garza. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Just a couple of questions. One, already being answered, and Mayor Shore, I thank you for providing that information to the council. But also, you mentioned you were the only respondent for the RFP at that time, and maybe this is a question to you or even our council, is there a timeframe of how long an RFP will be on file? Because I know this has been since 2017.
Sort of. So, and I don't want to go over the edge of my skis, but there was originally an RFP for this building in 2017, to which there were several respondents, I think.
Four, I believe.
Four, yes. Of the four, we were the only ones proposing a reuse of the property, at least in its entirety. That went by the wayside, and a new, fresh RFP was issued, I believe sometime around 2022-ish, one or two-ish, to which we responded to that. And the issue with that RFP was the respondents weren't able to solve for how to create a new City Hall. And so it was not closed. That RFP continued saying until there's a solution to new City Hall, where there's really nothing we could do. When that solution made itself known, we of course said, well, we'd continue to like to do our project with the old City Hall now that you have a solution. And so the proposal was more or less still there and is what you see before you.
Thank you. And then you mentioned off-site, 100 parking spaces off-site. Do you know that particular location as of now, or?
We don't.
Okay.
We don't. That's to work in conjunction with the city to what makes the most sense for both parties. But that hasn't been specifically identified yet.
Mayor Shore, do you want to expand on that?
Our parking will work with them. Right now, we are not as challenged as we once were with parking in our garages, so our parking will work with them to identify the 100 spots, probably, you know, as close as possible, but depending on what other businesses have and what they need. If it's going to be valet-related, then it could be North Cap, it could be a few different garages of our downtown garages, but we definitely have the space, and we look forward to selling the spots at fair market value at 100 spots. That'll be a welcome for our parking system.
And then lastly, employees. So how many, do you have an estimate of how many jobs that this new location would present?
I don't at this time. A lot of that will depend on the brand and then ultimately who runs the restaurant. So there'll be, I envision, frankly, the restaurant will probably be a third party, so they'll have their own employees, and then the hotel will have its own set of employees, but I don't have an exact number.
I'd like to elaborate just a little bit on that comment. What's beneficial about a hotel is that it's not only just the employees that you're able to provide employment for, it's all the ancillary services that support a hotel. So you have taxicabs, you have laundry service, you have liquor service, you have food service, you have entertainment that will come, you have retail shops that will be on the ground floor, and during the tourist season, there's going to be tarasels outside and so forth. So this really is a revenue generator that really exceeds what the city would otherwise see if this were another use such as an office building.
Mayor Shore.
Sorry to keep jumping in, I apologize. My staff is all watching, and they're sending me things. So on our City Hall webpage that we put up for previous City Halls, if you go to lansingmi.gov/cityhall, we have both the 2023 and the 2021 appraisals that were done, because we did them both times when we did the RFPs. They're both Valbridge. They both explain all of the assumptions and everything the council and Hussein have been asking about. 2023, it's 2.78 million as we know. 2021, it was 3.5 million. And then we'll go back and get the 2015 one, which we have to have somewhere. That was before my time, so we were looking through file cabinets and things when we came in and finding stuff, but we'll go back through those file cabinets again and see what we can find. But we do have '23 and '21 on the website at lansingmi.gov/cityhall, with a lot of the older stuff also, which probably needs to be removed, but those appraisals are there.
All right, thank you, Mayor Shore. And just want to touch on that. Now, with those being so far off within a year or two, do you plan on doing another appraisal? I mean, since we've been 12 months, I mean, it very well could have gone up in price.
I am not excited to do another appraisal, as it's been even longer, and I would be concerned that it goes down, and we have a good agreement for the 2.78, so my preference is to stick with that appraisal.
Sure. Are you all set? Councilman Carter?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Hussein.
No, and I just wanted to make sure that we can actually lay that out and explain that to the public. I think we understand this in terms of the value of this property, this is a depreciating asset period. And so if they're willing to go with a March 2023 appraisal, I'm certainly comfortable with that. But I just want to be able to, I want signs that are signed.
I agree a hundred, and I agree with you 100%, Councilman. I think that's the right move, and I'm glad these are on the website, because it goes through exactly how it was done in Valbridge, so you can put them side by side, check them out, so, and then when we get the other one, I'll get it to you. But 100% agree, appreciate it.
Vice President Hussein.
And, you know, we're always curious as to, you know, is this going to be the one bite at the apple for council? And so we know that, obviously, the sale of City Hall, this is a supermajority vote by the council. In terms of D3 Downtown Core District, is this, when we talk about lodging, and this is obviously for Greg, our attorney's office, is this a by-right use? Does it require a special land use, permit, anything of that nature?
I'm double-checking that, but I believe it's by-right.
By-right, okay.
D3 is one of the most flexible, because it's high-density, and that's a high-density use still, but I'll double-check that right now and get back.
All right. And as we have our potential purchases in the water, I just want to say I thank you for your interest, obviously, the City of Lansing. I think this is an exciting time, particularly in our downtown area, and I think this can be transformational in this area. I certainly appreciate you all willing to move forward without asking for incentives from this body. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. I do have some questions, unless I want to make sure the rest of my colleagues have ample time to ask questions. Councilman Carlson.
Thank you, President Garza. So I appreciate both of you coming. I appreciate the story you shared beforehand. You know, this looks promising, the proposal here. You know, you said a couple of things that hit home. You're not here for the money, you care about the community. And we hear that from developers all the time. So I would just hope that you actually, you know, you truly believe it. You had that dream here with your friend, you went on with your careers, but you know, there's things in Lansing that could really use philanthropy, TLC from folks, you know, sticking around. So I hope you stick around and be a part of our community.
Okay. Vice President Hussein.
I'm sorry, I do have a quick question. I thought I read somewhere that this would be, as part of the redevelopment agreement, maybe I'm wrong, that this would be, come onto fully the city tax rules for at least 20 years? Can you speak to that? Why at least 20 years? I don't understand that piece.
Well, without getting too deep into it, restrictions on alienation are disfavored generally by courts, so someone could, if it always has to stay on the tax rules, someone could probably sue us and say, you can't do that forever, and they would probably win. Now, in this instance, we put these clauses in a lot, actually all, of our, and they're, it's an evolving clause, and we had a great discussion about it, but we put this in all of our clauses when we are selling a downtown asset of the city, because it has happened more than once in the past that a different large nonprofit institution comes and buys that thing after we sell it to somebody else, and they develop it and say, oh, it's going to stay on the tax rules. Because one of the benefits to the city is obviously the tax revenue generated from putting something like this on the tax rules. This is a high-value This is a high-value asset. That's a lot of general fund dollars. And if, I don't know, a other government seated in Lansing were to purchase that item immediately, it would become tax exempt. And so that's part of the back and forth. And that, that also sort of factors into purchase price development, all that kind of stuff.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, a few of my questions were answered, but I still have a couple more. Now, you talked, this is about a 14-month construction project. So what is your commitment to local labor? Because when we talk about economic development, you know, the men and the women that work here, they live here, they support other businesses. Have you reached out to the local building trades?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because I've been talking to Price Doberneck since, since 2017. And I'm understanding that he just got promoted to a new position.
That is correct.
This job is, is going to be a plumber's dream. When you look at doing a hotel, this is the best you could ask for. So yes, we're going to be working with the plumbers' union for sure. There are other areas where we'll be negotiating with labor. But please understand something. I'm not new at this business. I've built a lot, in fact, I've built 10 million square feet of buildings in Chicago, which is known to be a union city. So as a consequence of that, I understand how to cooperate with the unions. And the unions have been very good to me in return. In particular, on this job, we're going to need very qualified plumbers. So I am confident that with your help and with Price's help and with Dustin's help, we'll get those people. I want to bring something else up. And that is, on every job we've done, diversity is a very important part of it. Not just in terms of hiring a certain number of diversities to work in a job, but reaching out into the community and teaching people how to even compete to work on such a job. And so as a consequence of this, the, one of the things that I did in the Chicago area was work with the Chicago Urban League to do exactly that. And I was the only white developer in Chicago to ever receive the Beautiful People Award. And I'm very proud of that. So this is a wonderful opportunity, not only to get people involved in the workforce, but to back up behind that workforce a cadre of people who will learn how to be the next workforce as it matures.
And I appreciate you saying that, you know. And I appreciate the, you know, the whole plumber, you know, I'm a licensed plumber myself, but the building trades, you know, there's 14 different crafts. And they are also in our Lansing School District right now doing a CTE program, teaching our youth, you know, how to get up. And there's other opportunities, post-education opportunities other than a four-year college degree. So those, those are also citizens of Lansing that potentially graduate and get into the building trades and potentially work on this project. So I would encourage you to reach out to the building trades and talk to them and see, because there's other licensed craftsmen, like electricians and sheet metal workers, mechanical workers, that all live and reside here in town. So it's not just the plumbers, as I'm, you know, obviously biased to that. But I would encourage you to reach out to the, all of the building trades.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Now, let's see where we at here. I wrote a couple of notes down. You mentioned, you mentioned slated room for a pool. What's the possibility of a pool being in the hotel?
I think it's, it's good. As we have shown it, there's an area physically within the building, to the north side of the building, the northwest, that would be ideal for a pool. People today, when they come to a hotel, typically don't use a pool. But it's a resource that hotel franchises want to have as an advertising opportunity to bring people to the hotel. So it's kind of like when you go to an apartment building and you show your mom and dad, I've got golf, I've got tennis, I have pickleball. And then later, they ask you, well, how often do you use these facilities? And you say, well, gosh, you know, I don't have the time, I've never used them. But those facilities are there. So that's one of the things that we want to provide in this facility.
All right. And I'm definitely no professional at all when it comes to building hotels. But I do have children. And every time we go abroad and stay in a hotel, they're always looking for that hotel with a pool. So.
And you're right. And that, the beauty of this is that, as JP pointed out, location, location, location. We're right across from the biggest tourist trap in the city, in the state, here in the city, with the capital being there. So definitely, we want to take advantage of that.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. And I, and, you know, I had a couple of questions of what's the name of the hotel? And I know you mentioned about licensing and, and the restaurant. And do you have any ideas of potentially what they could be or narrow down to two or three?
Yes. So we have been talking to several brands, one out of Chicago. It all depends on timing. So I don't want to get too, too deep into it. But within each brand, there's subsects of brands. So Hyatt has different brands, Marriott has different, Hilton and so forth. And then when you come into a certain area, existing brands have areas of protection. So like, there's a double tree here now. I can't do another double tree probably within a certain radius. But I can do another type of Hilton. And then you have to sit down with Hilton and say, which ones? And then you come to them and you share with them what you think as an owner would be successful. And then they, as the franchisor, have to tell you what they think would be successful. And you go through that. So we do have trouble, we've been looking at, talking to, and it's coming down to when would those come online relative to other projects they're looking at that would come online and how they all mesh. So I can't sit here and tell you today, we have cut a deal with X. But as we get closer to you all moving out and us starting construction, we will have a very clear picture as to who that's going to be and what the brand will be, absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you. And it's very much appreciated you guys are here tonight to answer our questions. You know, this is kind of, you know, we just received the packet. So I'm assuming there's going to be more questions. We're setting a public hearing for July 8th. Will you guys be available if there are any additional questions?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Now, and, and I would also encourage you to sit down with any council member that may have some unanswered questions and do the best you possibly can to answer those questions. So when it does come time for a vote, you know, there's nothing left on the table for unanswered questions.
One of the things that I did prior to this meeting was to reach out to each of the council members personally, and I have given them my telephone number. So they are free to call me at any time. If they're adverse to speaking with me, I'll give you JP's telephone number.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, well, I don't have any additional questions. Does any of my colleagues? Councilman Jackson.
Jeremy, no offense. But I just want to put out there that it is, you know, you did say you had a bias to the plumbers, right?
Absolutely.
And you did say it's a plumber's dream and that you've been in contact with the union that you work for. And you're the president. So it's just, I just want to put out there because, you know, it just, if you just hear that, you might think, oh, I don't know. Would, would you, you know, have to recuse yourself, maybe, city attorney, from something like this if you know that your job's going to benefit? I think there's some precedent to that. But I don't know. I just want to put it out there because I like to make sure everything is on the straight and narrow. So city attorney, if maybe not now, but you can, and maybe announce it to everybody at some point, how are we all doing with that?
Yeah, I, I can look into that more fully. But I'll just say, from my understanding of Council President Garza's situation, if he were to personally directly bid on the work, that could potentially be an issue. I don't know if that's in his direct line path. But we can cross that bridge if we come to it.
And I haven't had any communication with these, just for full disclosure, yet. And I do plan on working with you guys. And like I stated, Price is no longer with the, with the union. But I would encourage you to reach out to all the trades.
We will. And believe me, we'll do that at the appropriate time. You also have to take into consideration that we're talking about possibly two years from now.
Absolutely.
So I don't want to rev people up and get them excited. I don't like to have them say, where are you, where are you, where are you? And then not really want to give a hard bid in two years.
Perfect. Okay. We'll see, no further questions. We appreciate you guys being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving down the list, the discussion action item E, Resolution on Workers' Compensation Settlement Claim, WC 2062876. And I believe I'll be turning that over to Office of the City Attorney.
Lisa Hagan Lawrence from our offices coming down. She has all the answers cold.
Okay, what you have before you is a request for a settlement for a workers' compensation claim. This is a claim for a total of $57,000. Typically, in the Ways and Means meetings, there's about five questions that are asked. I have the answers here. The claimant in this, in this matter will not return to work. They retired from the city. Since that claimant has retired, they were not offered a job in another department. This claimant is approved for duty disability retirement, and they are collecting those benefits from the city. This is a full and complete redemption of any and all claims against the city.
All right. Well, thank you for that explanation. Do we have any questions from council? Any questions from council? All right. Well, I don't see any questions. I appreciate you presenting. Thank you. Oh, with that, Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So there is a resolution for workers' compensation settlement claim. This is WC 2062876-01517. And then based on the presentation, we appreciate the fact that all questions were anticipated. We appreciate that. So I'll move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any comments, questions from council? Seeing none? All those favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those oppose, same sign? All right, motion passes. Moving on down the agenda. We have Agenda Item F, Resolution, Grant Acceptance of Burn State Crisis Intervention Program, SCIP grant to fund a regional gun violence reduction program. And I believe Delisa Fontaine, Director of Neighborhood and Citizen Engagement. Thanks for being here, whatever seat you'd like.
I've never sat on SI before, so I'll just sit here.
Well, thanks for being here, Delisa. Do you mind just going through the program a little bit and giving a highlight and see if there's any questions for council? From council?
And so I'll apologize in advance. This is partially developed in partnership with our strategy analyst assisting in the application for funds. And so this is a collaboration between several departments. And so overall, we received notice that we had received this award. It is going towards expanding the Advanced Peace Program in general. This is additional expansion on top of existing obligations. The total amount of the award is $400,000, with a portion of that going towards administrative costs. So the cost of the city in administering the program will also be covered in part with the vast majority of the funds going towards the actual programming.
Okay. And this is a state of Michigan grant from the Michigan State Police?
Correct.
And can you just expand a little bit on the city of Lansing? We use $40,000 for administration and reporting.
Yep. And so overall, this is not too unusual of a provision. But as far as operating our grant agreements, one of the things that we try to do from time to time is capture the overall overhead that goes into administering grants, whether that's our accountant's time drawing down funds, staff time, and really managing all of the contracts and people and programming. But overall, it goes towards the general purpose of what is the overall infrastructure required to put this program into effect.
Great. Okay. Do we have any additional questions, council? Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Is, am I understanding that this is an additional $400,000 in addition to what we already give them?
Yes, correct.
Will this be a reoccurring grant or is this a one-time grant, do you know?
This is a one-time grant. This is just a one-time grant.
And all this money has to be used by December of 2025?
Correct.
Oh. Well, I expect some good stuff out of them then, because that's quite a bit of money. Do you have, Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, I guess because it is a one, or contemplated as a one-time grant, this eligible expense is our personnel only, correct? So if we expand capacity, I'm thinking additional strategists, maybe we have additional neighborhood change agents, whatever that might be. I would assume that the respective funders would have to then cobble together the dollars to support that in the future, correct?
Yeah. And so this does not promise any guarantee of additional funding. They would be operating under our existing funding as far as our general fund goes. And the expenses here would be by the structure of our existing contracts. So we've been operating on a reimbursement basis, to my understanding.
And so with the local operator being MPHI, I would assume that, because these are reimbursable, right? So we kicked the $360,000 over from our general fund and then we took MPHI. They, I mean, how does that work? They spend and then we are reimbursed by the state?
Yep. I might defer to you if you have a different process in place. But we would be receiving invoices for expenses that they have incurred as part of this program. We would reimburse those expenditures. And not having the grants in front of me, I can't remember whether they're paying us upfront or we would then immediately kick that back to the state of Michigan for reimbursement. But it wouldn't be us contributing our general fund dollars except what may be occur as part of cash flow and what we'd be receiving in part administrative dollars to cover that inconvenience.
Do we have any additional, Councilman Cost?
On the, on the grant form, it says annual, not one time.
That might be a clerical error. So this is a one-time award. I'm not aware of it. It might be a program that exists annually, but it wouldn't be guaranteed beyond this. Who could apply for it possibly in this?
Mayor Shore?
Have a contribution.
So these are burn grants, right?
Yeah. Yeah, burn grants are, they do them every year. They're funded every year. So it's, that should say one time. Because this is a one-time grant, it's not guaranteed to be used. But we get burn grants every year. We hired the additional four police officers a few years ago with a burn grant. So as they put out more dollars, we, we use it. But that should probably be one time because it's not guaranteed to be used for this year after year.
Now, could, could this burn grant be used for additional police officers as well? Or could it only be used for this?
No. No, we did that, we did that with the grant that we could for those. And we use those, we, we continued to use those dollars. And again, if we were to lose it, then we would have to pay for those. I think we did four police officers, maybe three or four years ago.
Okay, I see Councilman Spatter for us.
Yeah. And I'll agree with the mayor. We typically see these in the Ways and Means Committee, but we had a quorum issue and that's why we brought it to you tonight so it could get approved. But we do see the burn, I think JAG is in there as well. So there's a lot of annual grants that we receive through this program that funds a lot of stuff in the city. But this is just another one.
Councilman Cost, I didn't mean to cut you off. I just wanted to make sure that question got answered.
No, you're good. But then down here where the grant pays for, we talked about staff and it only going towards staff. But then it also says, I can't say that word today. Proposal, proposed gun violence reduction methods in Lansing's northwest region. So is it just going to staff or is it going to something that they're going to do with reducing gun violence?
So this funding will be used to deploy three additional peacekeepers and a neighborhood change agent that will be responsible for conducting the street outreach, conflict mediations, gun violence interruptions, and so on and so forth, strictly on the northwest side of Lansing.
It's 18 months. So, right, this is the 18 months. So it's not just that for one year, it's 18 months. So it's a year and a half.
Okay. Yeah. I just, you know, my concern is, is giving money, additional dollars to advance peace and making sure we're not funding their travel to Dubai or Paris. Because, you know, I have an issue with that when we have gun violence still going on in the streets. in the streets.
No.
So, it sounds like this can't go towards that.
Correct.
Delisa, could you just repeat what the three additional people, like what you just stated previously?
So, the awarded funding is used to deploy the three additional peacekeepers and a neighborhood change agent. So, four additional positions that are be responsible for conducting the street outreach, conflict mediations, the gun violence interruptions, the social media conflict resolutions, and shooting responses on the northwest side of Lansing.
Okay. So, for 18 months is what I heard the mayor say. Now, after that money runs out, it has to be spent by December of 2025, what happens to those four additional people?
In the meantime, they'll be, we'll be identifying additional grant funding that can go further to keep it going. So, we'll continue to identify grants. MPHI continues to identify grants, federal, state level. So, a lot of different options of funding.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Cost, do you have any additional remarks? No? Do we have any additional questions for Ms. Fontaine? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for being here. Very much appreciated.
With that, I would move the resolution of grant acceptance for the Burn State Crisis Intervention Program grant on a regional gun violence reduction program, of course, that being Advanced Peace.
Okay. We have a motion in place. Do we have any additional questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Move on down to Resolution G, Budget Amendment, National Opioid Settlement Fund. Mr. Brower?
Yes. And so, great news. We've received our next distribution of our national opioid settlement funds. As a reminder, this is not just from a singular source, but we're receiving these settlement funds from a variety of sources. If you are looking for more information as to the possible uses, there is a national opioid settlement website that comes up with a simple Google search, although I don't have the exact URL memorized. And also, the State Attorney General website has a number of resources related to the settlement itself, as well as a number of best practices that they're proposing, and some of their, the broader state strategy that is being developed to provide resources as to what are possible areas that we could look at spending these funds into the future. And so, while we have a proposal here, and we describe some of the eligible uses, to date, we've been splitting these funds between three departments, police, fire, and our human relations and community services department. Our HRCS department has proposed using these funds to host a community health and wellness fair, which is coming up late this summer, and to fund programs providing support and treatment for opioid usage. The fire department has proposed using these settlement funds for paramedic training and community risk reduction programs, such as public access AED and community CPR initiatives. And then, the police department has proposed using settlement funds for partnerships with advocacy groups who work to treat and support addiction. And so, overall, we're hoping to continue these efforts. I also encourage you to, not just in appropriating this, but looking forward into our next budget cycle, you have your October 1st deadline for budget priorities, and I welcome you to take the opportunity to say what you think might be good uses of these funds going forward. And we also welcome you, as we consider grant opportunities that appear on an annual basis, to really think about what you would like us to focus our efforts in applying for grant money to support not just our own general fund dollars. We welcome all of your ideas and hope that you will support this proposal.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Brower. Do we have any comments from council? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. You were asking about proposals for the opioid settlement money. Is there a way that you could fund the deceased families, positive things like their kid's school, or something like more restorative, like restorative justice-based, something that will help the people that we know, so many that got their names, and every single day almost, that's dying from this, or have died, if that's a possibility?
It may be. I'm not an expert on it. I can send you the resource that I refer to. It's commonly referred to as Exhibit E of the settlement agreements, and it enumerates a number of possible uses. I think generally, I describe it briefly as core abatement strategies, treatment, prevention, and strategies. Generally, this is perspective towards the treatment angle, but there's a certain amount of funds that can go towards retroactive expenses. If those can be determined to be within the scope of the restrictions of the grant funding, it could be possible. But again, I can't definitively say that. It's not something that leaps out at me.
Just one more thing. It's just interesting, because the whole settlement is retroactive, to try to make whole the different people, agencies, and departments that are missing. And I'm not trying to put the heat on you.
Oh, yeah.
It's just that, I mean, to like, everybody in here, this sounds normal, but if you, if any of the families of people that died, like, hears about this, they're going to probably cry and just say, you know, what about us? You know, what about our family? What about our loved ones, or their kids? So, if it's possible, maybe Lansing should be one of the ones that looks into some type of restorative manner for the people.
Yeah. I mean, some of the possible uses that do jump out at me, so I've heard of funds being used for treating, for mental health treatment, which could have a impact on families that helps prevent them from falling into a future opioid crises, treatment for opioid use disorder specifically, and then housing and transportation support I've seen as another possible avenue. And so, I know that our existing departments have been tasked to really respond aggressively to the needs of this crisis, and really not just looking back at the harm that's been done, but preventing future harms from occurring. But I do see what you're suggesting there, and I welcome you to continue thinking about that, and we can think about it ourselves.
Right. Thank you. Mayor Shore?
I know I don't usually jump, but it's a good idea. When we got the money, we looked at, we talked to the three departments that were most affected and asked them what they would like to see. We'd actually love to do treatment, but treatment, treatment facilities were way more than what we were getting on opioid. But it's not a bad idea to look at some kind of fund with future dollars that can go to victims' families if we're allowed. So, we'll add to the list. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
And then broadly, thinking conceptually, we're projected to receive about 3.6 million over 18 years. We're receiving larger distributions in the first few years, just based on the specific settlements and their durations. And then, I believe, for the majority of years, it's going to level out at about $200,000 a year that we'll be working with.
All right. Thanks, Jake. I just, just one, real quick, I see that the fire department has proposed using these settlement funds to include public access to AEDs for the community. Now, are we able to use the funds to replace any AEDs in the community centers? I mean, just looking, so I don't want to belabor the point, but I think that, you know, they do expire, and if you're able to use that, I think those are definitely valuable pieces of lifesaving equipment we need in our community centers.
I think it could be.
Okay. All right. Do we have any additional questions from council at this time? All right, Vice President Hussein?
Yeah. Before I move this, I guess I would just encourage the administration, I look at, there's a host of obviously eligible expenses. And I think when you talk about obviously restorative peace, when you look at responding to the crisis in real time, preventing issues in the future, you know, I think there's almost a hierarchy, right, of things that are probably evidence-based, and there's real efficacy to. So, when you look at, you know, evidence-based program, and you look at, you know, items that can be deployed in the community, such as the AEDs, in real time, those are exciting to me. I'm a little less excited when we talk about health fairs and like. So, what I don't want, I mean, we do a lot of that, and I think it feels good, and I think it is a visible thing, don't get me wrong, not a lot of data that suggests those are, those really move the dial long-term. So, I would just encourage us to really take a look at all of the eligible expenses. And obviously, you know, this is a, contemplate an equal appropriation of $146,000, 110 to each department. But even in the future with these dollars, I even think that, you know, that seems kind of, I don't want to say, I mean, it just seems kind of arbitrary, let's just split it right down the line. I mean, let's really think about, you know, the uses that would be, I think, best to implement in our community, which departments are truly, I think, positioned to utilize those dollars in real, you know, kind of transformative ways. Because this, to me, it feels a little different.
No. Thank you for that guidance, and I also want to take the last opportunity to thank the law department, too. Lansing in particular was a early participant in these opioid settlements, and as a result of that initiative that we took, we are, in fact, receiving a larger distribution than we would have. So, even though it is a heavy topic, our law department has done a good thing that will hopefully have long-term benefits for responding to the long-term effects of this.
Certainly hope so. With that, I would move the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments from council? Seeing no additional comments. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. And before I move down to the next agenda item, I just want to let the folks know that it just recently got here. We are still in committee of the whole. We have four more agenda items, then we have to go into closed session, so please bear with us. We will definitely get to the council meeting this evening. With that, Resolution I, CDBG Budget. I see Barb Kimmel in the audience. Do you mind coming down and, I'm sorry. Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. I apologize. We haven't got to that one. I crossed it on an accident. We are to the Budget Amendment fiscal year 2023, 2024, fourth quarter. Jake Brower?
Yes. And so, I realize I've been taking up a lot of your time, so I'll try and be brief with this. So, broadly, this adjustment is a final reconciliation of year-end revenues. I can go into the specific details of that, but the fun part of that is that the net impact balances out to zero, so nothing terribly exciting there. It is our year-end reconciliation of vacancy factor, which is sort of an administrative accounting line. We know we have a number of vacancies. We're not allocating it out directly as part of the budget process, so at year-end, we clean that up. Overall, vacancies across departments, one exception is our fire department, which went, is going over budget due to additional overtime costs. However, on the opposite side, when it comes to charges for services, we have received additional revenue from them, balancing out overall. But fortunately, on the appropriation side, we had sufficient vacancies across different department budgets to cover that difference, without having to really amend our expenditures as a net. Overall, I think our revenue assumptions are fairly conservative. Don't expect any negative surprises there between now and audit. Other weird things is within our major streets fund, we are recognizing a portion of revenue that will come from federal projects as reimbursements for already appropriated expenses, but our auditor said, hey, this is something that you should have a line item for, not just receive the money. So, we put that as a line item. And then, lastly, as it relates to the public media fund, these are donations for the Lansing Public Media Authority that were addressed to the City of Lansing. So, with us being the recipient, we need to appropriate those funds to do anything with them. And so, this proposes to do just that, to cover any related costs that may occur.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? All right, with that, Vice President Hussein?
Sure. I would move the resolution pertaining to Budget Amendment for fiscal year 2023, 2024, fourth quarter amendment.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Hussein. We have a proper motion. Any additional comments? Seeing no additional comments. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. All right, now we're to Barb Kimmel. I'm sorry for having you stand previously. Please come down to the well if you could, or if you feel comfortable standing at the podium. This is Resolution I, CDBG Budget. And Barb Kimmel, what is yours?
Aye. Well, we did finally receive our final allocations from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, so we were able to complete the annual action plan. And you have received a link to that plan, and it's available on the city's website. We did receive some reduction in funding for some grants, including the home grant. Those reductions were incrementally taken across the budgeted projects that we've planned.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. Yeah, we all do have the memo in front of us, the memorandum. Do we have any questions or comments from council to Ms. Kimmel? Vice President Hussein?
And if I missed it, I apologize. Was there any explanation as to why we received that reduction?
No. I mean, these are just allocated by HUD. Sometimes we receive a boost, and sometimes we receive a decrease. It just depends on HUD.
All right. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing no additional comments. Thanks for being here. Thanks for presenting that. And Vice President Hussein?
Sure. I would move the resolution pertaining to CDBG Budget.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Seeing no additional comments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Moving down. So, we have Resolution J. That's City Council Carry Forward Fiscal Year 2023, 2024 Budget. So, what we have here, what we're doing is recommending that the remaining unspent City Council dollars be carried forward into City Council line items that deal with miscellaneous operating, City Council training, and support for community events. Once again, this is just a recommendation to the administration, and if we have any questions, I will take those from council. Comments? Seeing none? All right, Vice President Hussein?
Sure. I would move the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. I should have mentioned that the carry forward is $27,769.05. All right, moving on down, Resolution K, Setting a Public Hearing on the Sale of City Property, City Hall. We just had our presentation from the Bytler Group, that setting the public hearing will be July 8th. And there's anything else you would like to add, Mayor Shore?
No.
Okay. Seen, any additional comments or questions from council? Seeing none. Vice President Hussein?
Sure. It states in the documentation, actually, I think given the resolution, that the purchase agreement was actually placed on file June 3rd. So, we, you know, per the charter, have met that 30-day requirement. The public hearing, if approved again, will be July 8th. And again, per the charter, for folks, if there was some question, I think I got an email, with, you know, we contemplate actually voting that day. Per the charter, there has to be one week, right, between the public hearing and actual City Council action. So, with that said, I would move the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. All right, moving down. Last resolution before we head into closed session is Resolution L, First Amendment to the Lansing Public Media Authority Articles of Incorporation. And with that, I will turn it over to the Office of the City Attorney.
Thank you. This is very exciting to have to say in front of everybody, I made a mistake. In the original Articles of Incorporation, when you read the, I think it's Section 5 of the LPMA, sorry, Article 5, Section 1, describes the number of people that are actually on the board, the commissioners. And originally, it said, the first sentence said, "The authority shall be directed and governed by a board of commissioners of eight voting members, known as the commission." And then, the remainder of the paragraph is the same as what's in the Amendment 1 that's in front of you. And if you count it all out, there are seven people enumerated.
Oh, sorry.
Not actually eight. So, that was an error by me. And in order to fix that error formally, we need to pass an amendment that changes the eight to a seven. That's what this does. That will then also be filed, and then we will be, our numbers will add up correctly. Thank you.
All right. Any comments or questions from council? All right, Vice President Hussein?
Sure. I would move the resolution pertaining to the First Amendment to the Lansing Public Media Authority Articles of Incorporation.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Okay, now we will be moving into closed session, folks. Clerk Richmond, would you please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. Vice President Hussein?
Yeah. So, pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection E, I move that recessed in closed session to consult the city attorney in connection with the following specific pending litigation. An open meeting will have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the City of Lansing concerning these cases. So, bear with me just for a minute. At
versus City of Lansing, Hewlon versus City of Lansing et al., Lynn versus City of Lansing 2019, Lynn versus City of Lansing et al. 2023, OPV Partners LLC versus the City of Lansing et al., Phillips versus City of Lansing et al., Romero versus City of Lansing et al., Simmons versus City of Lansing, and Ward versus City of Lansing et al.
Okay. Clerk Richmond, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Pallivano.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yay.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we will recess into closed session, we'll be back shortly.
Councilmember Cost.
Yay.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Okay, alright, we will recess into closed session. We'll be back shortly. Thank you.
Yeah, it's like, uh, he waits.
Okay, we will reconvene and see no further business. We will adjourn for about five minutes, and then we'll come back for city council. Thank you.